Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Tewksbury's zoning Board of Appeals. Today is June 30th, 2022. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First on the agenda is approval of our meeting minutes from April 28th, 2022, and May 26th, 2022.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. First on the agenda is Tara Mastrata and Michael Bootis for a variance under section 5.3, point 3A of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for side yard setbacks on a special permit under section 8 dot 1, 1B to construct a 20 by 19 by 9 two-story addition as shown on plans filed with the board. Said property is located at 27 Old Boston Road, assessors map 48, lot 32, zoned residential.
And who are the voting members on this one?
And the voting members are Rob, Mike, and Joe.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Name and addresses, please?
Tara Mastrata, 27 Old Boston Road.
Marcelo Fajera, MF Engineering, 109 Highland Avenue, Needham.
Great. Okay, can you talk about what you're planning to do here?
All right, so our client is proposing a new addition at the back of the house. And because of the shape of the property, we got too close to the property line at the one of the sides. But if we look at the tax map, the abutting property there, it's a complex, condominium complex, and you have a street between the property line and this property, which is it's far from what we are proposing here for the for the new addition.
I'm just reading what the building commissioner wrote. One second, I'm sorry. So you would only be about three feet from the setbacks as opposed to the 15?
Yes, we are three feet from the property line.
And that's for the addition?
For the addition, correct.
What's to the right of it from the where the three feet is the difference?
Can I approach?
Yes, please.
This is the property, it's right here.
Is that in our folder here? Yes, we have that, okay.
This is the complex at that side of the property. But if you look at, I should have printed a copy. If you look at the Google Maps, so you have plenty of room there, you have this wooded area, you have a street, and then you have the other buildings on the other side of
Thank you. So he showed me the same thing that you currently have.
It should be that piece right there.
That's correct.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
What happened to the railroad that's not intact anymore here? The railroad bed looks like it traveled right by there.
I didn't do the...
Oh, sorry. The train tracks are just cut off in the back there.
Okay. And that's your would be your side yard or your backyard?
So currently, right now, it's just a wooded area on the side of our yard.
Okay.
We don't go back there or anything.
Does the is that where the additions go into to that point? It's going to the to the right?
It's before that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Not right now.
Is this is this a residence?
Yes.
Why are you nonconforming to begin with before you even came in?
Well, the shape of the lot, it's really narrow. And what she's trying to accomplish on the addition, it's it's we only have that section of the house that we can add what she's asking for.
Let me ask my question again. You're asking for a special permit under 8 dot 1 dot 1B, which is existing nonconforming.
That's what we are requesting. I didn't fill up the application for that.
You're asking for you're asking for a variance for your side yard setback because you're three feet away.
Correct.
And then you're also asking for a special permit under section 8 dot 1 dot 1 dot B. 8 dot 1 dot 1B is nonconforming uses. The ZBA may issue a special permit to extend a nonconforming use only if it determines that the change or extension shall not be more substantially more detrimental than the existing nonconforming use. What's the addition going to be used for?
It's for residence.
Bedroom?
Yeah. Right now, currently, we're trying to expand our family, and one of the bedrooms is downstairs. So I just want us all up top to have all our bedrooms upstairs. So we would put another bedroom upstairs and then just an open room at the bottom.
Who filled out your application?
That's very specific. I don't think I requested that.
It's on your application.
You did.
We'll take a look.
That's why.
Did the building inspector say that?
Yes, that's what he wrote. The building inspector wrote it on the reason, but it makes no sense why.
Why don't you sit back down so we can have you on the microphone, please?
According to the contractor that's going to be doing the remodeling, the new addition, the stairs inside the house are not conforming, and we're going to move the stairs and bring up to the code.
No. No. This is it's a use thing. It's a use thing, like if you were running a business out of it, and you're adding to
Yeah, I'm sorry, but this information here, it wasn't my writing. I didn't fill this form. So that's what your interpretation was for this?
It's a use. It's a use. It's not it's not a you're already too close or anything like that. It specifically calls out nonconforming use.
I think that by reading the zoning code, he probably misinterpreted that. So what he was trying to achieve is that stairs inside the house are not conforming right now. So we're going to move the stairs and bring into the code.
You'd I have no problem with scratching off the special permit. I'm sure the board doesn't have a problem with that. But if there's a reason for it to be there, you're going to be back in front of us.
No, there's no reason for that. That's very specific.
Because that's what you were denied for as well.
That's what is on your denial letter.
From the building commissioner.
Yeah. And you submitted this, right? You submitted this. Yeah, so I think when you got the code...
You need to just face forward and just we'll figure this out together.
Yeah.
I mean, I see that the reason was written by the building inspector.
I think we can cross that. That's not part of what we are asking. It's just for the setback. And according to him...
Well, he wrote it in his letter, so I would really because if we scratch it, you'll be back again. So really, let's think about before we scratch anything off the table.
All right.
Let's look at this. I don't want you to have to do this twice.
So just so I'm understanding correctly, that is that denial is based off of...
Two codes, there are two two different. One is for a special permit, and one is for setbacks. So we're trying to figure out what the special permit is for. We get the setbacks, that makes complete sense. You don't have the room, the yardage, that's fine. But it's that special permit piece we can't figure out what...
And that would be normal for business?
I don't have the letter in front of me. I have it somewhere, I just can't find it. Oh, thank you.
The user's paper.
It was page two, because that's where he wrote it. Right here. Special office, something or other, and I had the right size, master bedroom on the second floor. It's an art shape which problematic to the property established.
Yeah, this was this was written by the occupant.
Oh, that was them.
This is their reason.
Oh, to the zoning board, yeah.
To us, that's not what this is what he wrote.
So you guys were asking for that.
Didn't mention anything about the office.
It says here in the letter that's addressed to the zoning board, proposed addition to include an office on the first floor. What type of office would that be? Just home office?
Just home office.
Yeah, not commercial, no, no, just home office.
Oh, probably that's why.
Also, you had proposed to the building inspector that you were going to put an office in that building in your home?
It's not.
So if you said that, then he probably thought that it was for a business.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, no.
It's a home office.
Yeah. Since the pandemic, I now work from home.
Who doesn't? Actually, I don't anymore.
I love it. I've been on the longest maternity leave in my life, I say.
Do you have any pictures of what you want to build?
Do you have the pictures of what you're doing to the house?
Yes, I do.
To the house?
Can you approach it?
Yes, please. Yeah, we have those. Oh, thank you for giving that. That I don't have. Can we keep these?
Did you show something different to the building commissioner?
That's what you included, right?
Well, because on your denial letter, it also says the proposed deck would only be approximately 3.3 feet away. Does this addition have a deck on it?
No, there's no deck on it.
No deck?
No deck. I have a deck right now.
Are you moving the deck at all or changing anything to the deck?
No.
No.
Which is basically an office on the first floor and master bedroom on the second floor?
Correct.
I don't know. I don't know whether there's a special permit listed.
Do you guys have any more questions?
No.
I don't know.
Now, the only question I have is, do we want to scratch the special permit, or do you want to do continue and have the applicant find out why there's a special permit listed on their application? I'm not comfortable with rendering a special permit.
I'm not either, because I would say I would I would prefer you go back to the building personally. We can vote on this after, but I would want to go back to the building inspector. Did you you get this letter? You got this letter from him, right? The denial letter?
Yeah, he got it.
Did it make sense to you? Because I'm sitting here reading it, and it doesn't make sense to me. So I would personally would want to question what it means and what he's denying and what he's requesting.
You understand where we're at, right? You're asking for a special permit for a use?
Yeah.
And you're telling us you don't need it?
Yeah.
And we'd hate to just cross it off, and then you'd be back next month paying all the money and recertifying letters and all that to come back again for a special permit. Or we continue, and you contact the building commissioner and ask him why he wants you to get a special permit.
Yeah, let's continue.
We'll have to put this off a month and or whenever.
A month?
Yeah, we'll be back in a month.
We'd have to vote on that.
Yeah, we need to vote on that. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion. Is there anything else you'd like to say right now?
No.
I'd like to make a motion to continue Tara Mastrata and Michael Bootis for a variance under section 40. It's in the old book. For a variance under section 5 dot 3 dot 1A of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for side yard setbacks and a special permit under section 8 dot 1 dot 1B to construct a 20 by 19 nine two-foot, excuse me, two-story addition as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 27 Old Boston Road, assessors map 48, lot 32, zoned residential. Continue that to our next month's scheduled hearing, which is July 28th at 6:30.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you in a month.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Do you want to take this with you?
Sure.
Go to the building commissioner and find out why he wanted a special permit.
I would ask about that and this that I underlined. All right, good luck. See you in a month. Next is Frederick McKinnon for variance under section 5 dot 3 dot 1E3 on of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for side yard setback to construct a 10 by 20 carport to the attached garage as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 1501 Whipple Road, assessors map 56, lot 196, zoned residential. Name and address, please?
Frederick McKinnon.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. And the voting members is myself, Nancy, Rob, and Mike. Name and address, please?
Frederick McKinnon, 1501 Whipple Road.
Can you talk about what you're trying to do, please?
Well, I want to build a carport, have it attached off the side of my garage. I park my car there quite often, and I figured I'd build a carport, keep it out of the elements.
You already have a garage there, huh? You already have a fence there?
Yes.
So it'll be above from the fence, it looks like.
It would be inside the fence, obviously.
Yeah, inside the fence, right.
Got to excuse my drawings.
Straighter than I will draw, never.
20 feet long, six and a half feet tall, sitting on four by fours.
Excuse me?
20 feet long?
Yes.
Six and a half feet tall?
Approximately, yes.
Sitting on four by fours?
Four by fours.
Roof, no walls?
No walls, roof.
Roof.
Two by sixes.
Footings, not a foundation?
Yeah.
Sonotube footing?
Yeah. Do they have to be four feet down?
That's not up to us. That's up to the building commissioner. What we're here for...
I showed you a spot, Pete.
What we're here for is your...
The variance.
Your variance.
Right.
You're actually you need all of that variance, because what you're looking for is a detached accessory structure shall not be shall be located on the same lot. You got that? Behind the front of the building line. You're kind of right on the edge with that one.
Yes, that's right there.
Should not be located nearer than 10 feet from the principal building. You are. And shall be located at least 10 feet from any side of a real lot.
Minus closer than 10 feet from the side.
You're one foot two from the side.
Oh, after it's built, yes.
Right. Well, your garage, your garage was okay. That's why you didn't need a variance.
I didn't need a variance for that.
You did not need a variance for that one.
No, it's already 10 feet.
I built that like 40 years ago.
I have I have no questions.
No? Do you have anything else you want to ask?
No.
Being an open hearing, is there anybody who wants to speak on this? Nope. Would like to make a motion?
You can't. I'd like to make a motion, both thoughts of the hearing.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like, any discussion?
No.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Frederick McKinnon for a variance under section 5 dot 3 dot 1E3 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for a side yard setback to construct a 10 by 20...
That's right, 10 by 20.
10 by 20 carport to the attached garage as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 1501 Whipple Road, assessors map 56, lot 196, zoned residential.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rupert?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good luck.
Is my next process to go get the downstairs and get the permit? Is that what I go through next?
You get the you get notified, or do they? I don't know what they do, how they go through that.
There's an appeal process that you have to wait for.
Yeah.
And then you go get the permit. Go see downstairs.
Yeah, they'll tell you.
Okay, they open tomorrow?
Yeah, they should be.
What, till noon time or something?
Should be open all day. It's not a holiday.
I'm working.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Maureen Hawkins for a variance under section 5 dot 3 dot 1E3 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for a yard rear yard setback for a previously installed above-ground pool as shown on plans filed with this board. Said property is located at 107 Tyler Road, assessors map 18, lot 54, zoned residential. And voting on this one is Joe, Mike, and Rob.
Name and address for the board, please?
Maureen Hawkins, 107 Tyler Road.
Mike, can you just tell us a little bit about what you're trying to do here?
So I had a pool installed last year, and I had indicated to the installer that I need to make sure that he was 10 feet away from the property line, the fence that I have. And during a I had an inspection after the electrical was done for the pool for the grounding, and it was signed off. So I assumed everything was good. It looked like it was 10 feet. And I this year I was adding a deck to the pool, and the building inspector, when he went out to go check the footings, he brought it to my attention that the pool was not 10 feet from the property line.
It's indicated here, it's eight foot seven inches, is that what it is?
Correct.
Did you have a building building permit to put in the pool last year?
I did.
Was it signed off?
I, yeah, well, it is. I have it, I have it here, and I assumed it was good to go. I got a signature on it and...
Building permit or the electrical permit?
Both. Don't they just sign this? My electrician said he came by and signed it. And it was this before, there was nothing, and then that was there.
You got your final building. Thank you.
So Rob, they get both sign offs, building and electrical? You're not here for the deck, you're here because the pool's three feet in.
Correct, yeah.
All right.
Yep.
I have no questions.
Any? See ya?
They went in for a permit to do a deck. And they called out on a pool. That was a creep.
All right. Do you guys have any questions?
No.
All right, being it's a open hearings, is there anybody that wants to speak or have anything they want to say? No? Motion?
Move to close both parts of the hearing?
Okay.
Second?
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
All set?
Okay, great.
Nope.
Thank you.
Well, you did just close the hearing.
All right, sorry.
Have them make another motion.
Can you make a motion to approve?
Yeah, make a motion to approve, uh-
We're making, we haven't made that motion yet.
For a variance on-
Oh, sorry.
God, no, no, sorry.
It's on us. For a variance under section five point three point one E three for the Tewksbury zoning bylaw for a, uh, rear yard setback for a previously installed above-ground pool as shown on plans filed with the board. The, uh, said property is located at one zero seven Tyler Road, assesses map eighteen, lot fifty-four, zoned residential.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll second that motion.
I'm on a roll today, everybody. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob. All set, no, thank you, I'm sorry.
Better than what I do.
I'm on a roll today, I'm just like marching through. Next on the agenda is Daniel Bailey on behalf of Al rig USA acquisitions for a special permit under section thirty-one thirty, appendix A, table of uses, section C, commercial uses fourteen of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw to construct and operate a high, a drive-through car wash on the property as shown on plans with this board, said property is located at eighteen seventy-nine Main Street. Assesses map eighty-seven, lot eighteen, zoned commercial. Good evening, name and address for the board, please?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more thing I need to say is that the three voting members is myself, Mike and Rob. Sorry.
Thank you. For the record, my name's Dan Bailey, I am a land use attorney with the firm of Pierce Atwood in Boston. Uh, with me tonight is the project engineer Jake Montastow from Stonefield Engineering. We represent Al Rig USA acquisitions, uh, which is a Michigan-based real estate developer. They have the property at eighteen seventy-nine Main Street under agreement. And we've proposed, submitted an application for a special permit for a car wash. Uh, there are three pieces to what we have to say to you tonight. Uh, the first is, I'm going to go over the zoning, because it's a little, little unusual, we've got a zoning freeze, I'll explain that. Uh, I know you have information from the town planner on that too. Jake will then go over the project, he's got boards and other information on that. Uh, and then I'll just briefly touch on the criteria for a special permit. Uh, and of course, we're happy to answer any questions at any time. You know, you have a memo in the file from the town planner that explains that this application is submitted in part under the zoning bylaw in effect uh, prior to town meeting. You know, the town completely revamped, re-codified its zoning bylaw at the May town meeting. Uh, we filed a Form P A and R plan prior to town meeting, which was endorsed by the planning board. That provides this property with a three-year use freeze, so, um, you know, spec, you can no longer obtain a special permit for a car wash in this district under the two thousand twenty-two bylaw, but you can obtain one under the two thousand twenty-one bylaw. So, it's a use freeze only, we're subject to all of the dimensional and other requirements of the twenty twenty-two bylaw. So the property is located, you know, it was located in the highway business district or highway district, in the front and heavy industrial in the rear and in the highway district. There's the availability of a special permit. So, I'm going to ask Jake to take over now and walk you through the project.
Good evening, members of the board, Jake Cradesso, Stonefield, one twenty, Washington Street, Salem, Massachusetts, for the record. I just have a couple of boards. Some kind of materials here for the project, it's how they- Where are you looking in front of you, it's just a Google Maps rendering, showing a parcel shown here in yellow. Some of you may have known this as the vacant parcel at Main Street Airport Road, it's on the south side of that intersection, the airport and Main Street, um, intersection is signalized. This, I think was historically, we'll call it a sports complex, at best, um, it's been vacant for some time now. Property is about two point three acres and sized altogether. And from an impervious coverage standpoint, as it sits today, there's about one and a half acres of impervious coverage. That includes basically what's left over from the previous user. All right, and do you want to bring a note that the, as it sits today, the southern part of the property, as you look at the page, is Heath Brook, there is a flood plane that does extend into our property. I'll go into that in a little bit, but all necessary improvements are being made to ensure that there's no detriment, detrimental impact to the Heath Brook if, if any can say this was an improvement. See everything that's going there. Um, so we're bounded by Main Street, DOT right of way. Currently out there today, there is, we'll call it two access points, one is an unconventional access point, kind of close to the northeast corner of the property, uh, at that airport and, uh, Main Street intersection. Essentially, there's a pedestrian crossing that crosses a drive. It, it almost acts as a fifth access point, um, to the right of way. And then there's, we'll call it a shared drive, that's almost splitting the Domino's property to the right of us, uh, and then our parcel, um, directly to the left. All right, it's important to know that, um, even though the special permit request is for you tonight is for a car wash uh, with the freeze, uh, several properties over approximately seven parcels, uh, to our east. There is actually a zone that would permit that, so when we talk about consistency, as far as the use, uh, it would be in line with what's, what the intent is within the corridor. Uh, and we've had, before this project even started, we've had extensive conversations with the town professionals, uh, town staff, DOT. Uh, we've done a lot of legwork on our end to make sure this application is, we'll call it as tight as possible. So, what the applicant is looking to do is to, uh, raise everything on site and actually vegetate quite a bit in the rear of the parcel and install a new automated car wash, it's an express car wash, uh, facility. Express car wash essentially means, you know, you're staying inside your vehicle at all times. So, I, I think it's always best to walk the board through, we're expecting to be a typical car wash, uh, in our interaction. We are expecting most of our traffic to enter off of Main Street. Uh, it is a full movement driveway. My office did prepare a traffic study, um, anticipating this full movement driveway and did have conversations with DOT as well regarding this access point. DOT is on board with the full movement driveway, um, at this location and the traffic study does support having that full movement driveway. So we're expecting those customers to take a, I, just for the board's reference, essentially one eight hundred and eighty degrees, uh, the top of the page is now south. Main Street is now at the bottom of the page. So you'll enter off of Main Street, uh, view the drive, it's, again, it's, it's large in size, there's access movements when you're taking a left out and a right out, uh, not to ensure that we have enough queuing. Uh, you'll enter, you'll take an immediate right, um, into the property, uh, you will pass into the car, uh, queuing facility where our three pay stations are, uh, it's kind of more running, as you look at, it's the plan right, it's the west, uh, property line, uh, that's bordering Airport Road, which is a private road. Uh, that we, there, there's no guaranteed access to a private road. You will, we will then enter into the twenty-one car queue. Uh, we are anticipating that to be plenty of queuing capacity with these modern express car washes. We actually have the ability to speed and slow down, uh, the processing ability of the facility itself, and I'll get into that a little bit more. Three pay lanes, outside pay lane will be for members, uh, members only, where this is a subscription-based, uh, Icon Express, um, model. So, we're hoping that we'll have plenty of members who will have quick and easy access to the outside lane and through, there's an overhead license plate reader, uh, at the pay station, again, to continue to help process vehicles as fast as possible. The building itself, we'll have a Kia, we'll call it a, a pay station, actually directly adjacent to, they call the inside lane adjacent to, uh, the building, there's actually a manager's office there and a pay station, so all of our customer action, we're really anticipating just being here, so there's going to be a manager with eyes on the, uh, the POS and, you know, there'll be a customer service there person as well. We're expecting between two and six employees on site at any given time. A- after, uh, the customer selects one of the options, um, as far as, uh, the wash within the vehicle, uh, within the, uh, the building, they will then head towards the rear of the parcel and then enter, or they'll have the option in case, you know, they decide not to get a car wash to exit out the emergency, uh, egress lane, which essentially acts as a bypass, and then into, enter or enter into the tunnel. Again, this is an entirely enclosed automated express car wash, so basically the intent is, when you drive in, dry, you leave dry, so all the operations will happen inside the building. It's a seven days a week, eight AM to eight PM, um, uh, express car wash. Rule of thumb, really, when we look at this from a timing perspective, it's about two and a half minutes, uh, through here and it's not one car at a time, there's I think for this facility, we can have, and, you know, just over, I think, five vehicles, uh, at any given time going through the tunnel, so it, we have the ability to rapidly, you know, ensure customers are coming through and out, and as I said, we have the ability to speed up the conveyor belt. All the, all the chemicals that are being used are biodegradable, OSHA approved. Uh, everything, like I said, is going to be contained within the building, we've ensured, um, we'll call it appropriate slopes in and out of the building to ensure, uh, drivers', um, ability to exit and then to ensure that everything is being collected inside. Uh, these will actually go through three reclaim tanks, they're two thousand gallons in size. Essentially, what allows us to do is to, to take some of the water that we're using, as some people may think of a car wash as a high demand user, we're only actually using a two-inch water line uh, and reclaiming, you know, some of that water that is being, uh, processed through the car wash back into it. So if you're driving through it, you know, most of the water, some of the water, I should say, you're going to see, uh, coming, uh, out, um, you know, in the actual facility itself, is going to be reclaimed. Um, so it's an added benefit here, it's, it's not, uh, necessarily, uh, required, but it's what the applicant is doing to ensure, um, it's, we'll call it, de minimis, uh, impact to the existing available systems. Uh, after the facility, after you leave the facility, there'll be heated concrete pad to ensure that there's no icing over any, you know, remnants. And then you'll have the ability to either exit out of the full moon driveway, you'll come out, you'll take a right, again, the ability to cross over to the Domino's Pizza, plan left, uh, that would be to the east side of the property, or exit out onto Main Street. Or we're expecting most customers to do, after they've done, uh, their, their car wash, is to take a right into the vacuum area. There are thirty parking spaces on the site, kind of on the left side of the plan, adjacent to the car wash facility. Uh, twenty-three of them will be vacuumed, we'll have six, uh, employee parking spaces, so the employees have been accounted for. Uh, there's a turnaround area at the rear, that's the striped area at the top of the page. There's two ADA parking spaces, one will actually have vacuum, uh, bu, uh, vacuum boom successful for it, and one is just a regular ADA parking space. Each, uh, vacuum space, it's oversized, approximately twelve feet in width, uh, with eighteen feet in depth. So it's larger than your typical parking space, this is not the minimums, we want to ensure that customers have the ability to open up their doors and access, uh, their vehicles when they're cleaning them. So each parking space on edge of each one of the, we'll call it the striping, there's an overhead boom. Uh, these overhead booms, approx eleven feet in height, they'll have an LED light, um, that'll illuminate near the areas glow, that'll be on in, uh, hours of dusk, um, until closing. So, depending on the year, you know, the lights will be on more or less, you know, at different times. So, each one of these, uh, uh, spaces will have that ability at the end, um, of that vacuum boom, which is overhead. There will be a trash receptacle, microfiber towels, uh, basically a bunch of amenities, uh, for the, the customers. This is essentially meant to be an ancillary, uh, to the use. So, as, as much as possible, we, we, we've kind of contained everything, uh, within the footprint, uh, of the commercial component of this parcel. There are, uh, vacuum producers located in the front, um, of the property, uh, they're actually enclosed just to ensure, um, visual, um, well, aesthetics are, are kept with the facility and also dampers some of the sound, uh, that does come from, uh, those vacuum producers. There's a trash enclosure located, um, also for easy access for the facility, located, uh, in the front yard, kind of more close to the Domino's facility, so it'll be, it'll be hidden between the, the two buildings, uh, when it's all said and done. Trash pickup for us is about once a week, it's as needed. Uh, this will happen before, we'll call it peak hours, um, of the facility. That's really from an overall site plan perspective, that's what we're doing. Global standpoint, from a stormwater perspective, we are increasing the amount of pervia, or green space on site. We see in the rear, majority of that was essentially all impervious coverage, we're revegetating that, we're actually, uh, mitigating for any compensation regarding that flood in that, that area as well. The Heath Brook does have a, it's called the riverfront development setbacks, we're actually revegetating the first twenty-five feet from that, ensuring that there's no spill, um, from our stormwater into that facility. As well as before stormwater leaves our site, it'll be at a reduced rate. Uh, it'll actually be cleaned through, uh, a water quality measure, uh, located, uh, at the rear of the, the facility. Also at the rear of the facility, we have an area for snow storage. Again, this application's been very thought out to ensure that we have all the necessary items, um, to put this request in front of you. It's a modern car wash, so we do have lighting, there's eight, uh, eight LED, uh, pole lights mounted around the facility. Twenty-five boom-minded LED lights that we talked about before. Again, those will be only on from dusk till, we'll call it closing, or an hour after closing. Um, so limited, uh, exposure at night, so, we call it nine o'clock, you probably won't be seeing these lights on. As far as landscaping, this is, again, a visual reference of what's being proposed, you can see as much as we can, we've concentrated all the landscaping for the proposed development around the facility to ensure that we're, we're properly, uh, landscaping the facility with ten trees located around the parcel. Uh, all of the one hundred and sixty-six shrubs, uh, which are vibramium, inkberries, bayberries are scattered around the perimeter, so essentially what that does is, allows us to screen, um, some of the headlights that may be, uh, associated with this kind of use. So we're, as much as we can, we're ensuring that there's no detriment to any adjoining properties, whatever that potential use, if someone decides to redevelop, uh, down the line. That is generally the, the application from a site plan, uh, top-down perspective. Some of the zoning components.
Sure, and, and I'll also mention that, um, we've applied, uh, as required, for site plan review with the planning board. Uh, we've got a hearing coming up in a, two, three weeks on that. Because site plan review is required. The zoning bylaw, and this was set out in the memo from Alex Lauter on June eighth, but section three point five point three of the zoning bylaw specifies the criteria that the board is to consider when considering this proposal, and the first is that social, economic or community needs that are served by the proposal. I'll just read through these and then, you know, sort of speak generally to them. Uh, the next one is traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading. The next is adequacy of utilities and other public services. The next is neighborhood character and social structures. The next one is consistency with the purposes of the district. The next is impacts on the natural environment. And the final one is the potential fi, fiscal impact, including impact on town services, tax base and employment. Uh, we feel that project as designed meets these criteria. That it is taking a piece of property that has not been in any sort of active use for quite some time, returning it to active use, returning it to the tax rolls. As Jake mentioned, uh, the environmental benefits of redeveloping the site and bringing it up to current stormwater standards and substantial reduction in the amount of impervious surface, particularly close to the stream, are benefits, we're going to be treating the stormwater. Uh, the existing, you know, their existing utilities, uh, it's on a main street. The, uh, the capacity is there for, to handle the, the traffic and the parking. A car wash actually is not, uh, a, a real big generator of traffic. Certainly not like a, a drive-through, uh, but, um, you know, you know, I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but you all kind of know what a car wash is, you know, after work and, and Saturdays and Sundays. and Sundays, it'll get busy. But it's also consistent with the other types of uses in that area, which are, you know, uses that are the type that when you're out doing your Saturday errands, you're likely to go there. Restaurants, you know, service, service uses. You know, I've already mentioned the natural environment, consistency with neighborhood character, and, you know, a benefit to the tax base and employment. And with that, we're done and happy to answer any questions.
Your access on Airport Road, is that something that's in the works? I know you said it's private, private way.
Yes, I guess I'll touch on this.
Sure.
It's a private way. The intent right now is to request, and we're in the process of requesting access to Airport Road. That is part of some of the waiver requests you have in front of you tonight, has to do with that. We have talked with DOT regarding this. Traffic study was actually done to support this. We did one without it, also supports it, but I think everyone would like to see access to that intersection. So we have direct, you know, access from a signalized intersection. We reduce conflict. So it's not solidified. We're trying. It's part of the request. So if it does, if it does, you know, go away, you know, we're ready to continue to proceed with or without it.
DOT was, was good with the traffic study?
Uh, yes.
I know when you come down Main Street and you pass McDonald's there, people that are trying to go into, say, Domino's, which is right next to you, that gets bottlenecked right there. And then it widens out.
So we, we, we're still in that process of working with DOT as far as this, but, you know, I think there were some small striping changes that we'd make to improve the intersection. Because we're changing, it may not seem very large, the actual intersection there, there are going to be, have to be some signal improvements that are made, primarily for pedestrians. So we're going to do some associated striping as well, which will help hopefully, you know, fix that problem.
So you're all going to do some work to the intersection?
Yeah, yes. It's anticipated. It hasn't been formalized yet, you know, nothing on the record, but that was, that's what we are anticipating.
But you have to do a site review anyways?
Yes.
With the planning board?
Yeah. And just to point a clarification, you know, those waivers are taken up by the planning board in connection with site plan review.
I just worry about on a, the first hot Saturday afternoon, all your vacuum bays are filled up with people washing their cars and people are getting in there.
It's hot and it's filled. I think we'll be happy. We do expect most of our customers actually come after snow events, rain events. So that's, that's when this thing will fill up.
You're in the neighborhood for all the events in town, Joe?
Yes.
No questions? No?
No.
Do you have any questions?
I would like to ask some. So are you guys trying to get access right now from Airport Road?
Yeah. Yeah. It's an unusual title. That's the way I'll put it.
So, and to access that property now, you would do what you guys are proposing now without Airport Road, correct?
Yes.
Alright.
Yeah. If we can come out at the signalized intersection, then is a better result. But, you know, I know that the client has reached out to the owner of the property in the rear to discuss obtaining an easement to use Airport Road. I think that we probably have an easement, but it's not express and, you know, it's, it's just not bankable. You know, it's, yeah, I've got lawyerly arguments why we have an easement, but you really want to have something in writing.
Understand.
I mean, normally you have, when you were bought a private road, normally you have the right to use it, you know, but as I said, the title on this one is a little different than what you usually see.
Sure.
Well, you have, in your plan, you've got a driveway out to that road, right?
As of right now, yeah. We also have a plan to work with, without not being there. And it's essentially the same. I can draw in an ice cream machine.
Couple more bushes?
Yeah. It's, it would essentially function the same.
I have no question. I think the applicant covered everything.
Big and public hearing? Does anybody have anything there?
Yes.
Okay. Could you go to the podium, please, and name an address for the board, please?
My name is John Karamaris and I'm here with my dad. My dad is the owner of 1899 Main Street, which is the parcel directly to the northeast of the applicant's. So we have a number of issues with this plan. I didn't even see the plan until Wednesday. It wasn't on the website until Wednesday. But the main, we have three main issues. The first issue is the proposed cross-access that the applicant has indicated that goes over 1899 Main Street, our parcel, onto the parking lot. What is the applicant's basis for proposing cross-access through a private parcel?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
On the plan, on the northeast section of the plan, you'll see a proposed cross-access.
So be ready to answer.
Coming over to Domino's.
Yeah.
He has a two-way proposed cross-access of 14 foot wide.
Right.
That abuts a private parcel next door. What is the applicant's basis for asserting right to cross a private adjoining parcel?
Do you guys want to answer that to me, please?
Yeah, we, go ahead.
It's an existing condition as is today. It's actually basically an open tarmac. I, you know, as far as the actual easement agreements that are in place, I'm not privy to that. I know they're going to obtain any kind of access easement agreements that would continue here. Obviously part of that is the adjoining property to us would be a benefit. The adjoining property to us actually.
No, you have to address the chair.
You have to address the board.
Sorry. The adjoining property actually ended up being a benefactor by keeping that existing driveway there. Currently out there today, the driveway is, we'll call it not in modern conformance. So if the adjoining property was to redevelop or do basically anything within the right of way, they'd have to reapply for a DOT permit and their access could be eliminated. So, you know, if anything, we're actually providing a benefit to the adjoining property and it continues the current flow that's there today.
I think to add to what the applicant is saying, is they come to the zoning board for a special permit. We're not, the planning board looks at the site development. They're coming to us just for a special permit to actually have a car wash. So the site plan and the accesses and all of that would be in front of the planning board.
Okay.
I understand your question and your concern.
Right. Okay. My second point is, I just want to go on the record that there is no easement between the two parcels. There's no easement by prescription. There's no easement by, any written express or implied easement over this, over this boundary line. The second issue we have is the, the actual plot plan that they did, we do have an issue with the plot plan. And again, I, I just saw this on Wednesday. I don't know if you guys had access to it before Wednesday, but this is also a site issue, but we do have an issue with the plot plan and we'd like an opportunity to do our own survey to present to the board. Because there's an issue on the corner of this lot that we'd like to put on the record.
Are you looking to ask the applicant if you can survey their property or you want to survey your property?
Survey my property.
Right ahead.
You're welcome to do that at any time.
Okay. Well, again, this, this application was not available to me until Wednesday. So I don't know if you guys are, is the ZBA, are you guys going to vote on anything? You're going to vote on this, this evening or what?
Yes.
You're going to, so I would ask for a continuance to allow us to survey our lot.
Can I respond to that?
Yes.
We have stamped plans.
Understood.
Okay. The abuser received notice of this hearing two weeks ago. Could have come down to the town hall and got the plans long ago. He didn't have to wait for them to be on the website. So it's a little disingenuous to come in here now and say, I only got this stuff two days ago. He knows what he's doing.
The notice of the, of the, the notice on the, that I got from the town of Tewksbury that you applied with, this, I'll read the actual letter. It says, "The application may be examined on the zoning board of appeals webpage of the town of Tewksbury website at twsburrymass.gov." Okay. I called the Jac, I think it was Jaclyn Smith, forgot who it was, at planning over two weeks ago, and I just got this on Wednesday.
Are you scheduled to go up in front of the planning board?
We're in front of the planning board in two weeks. Yeah. I don't have my calendar with me.
That would be the best place to bring that, is the planning board. And that's in two weeks. So that would give you two weeks' time.
But you guys are voting on this application tonight, right?
So, so what the, I understand your concerns, believe me. I understand. The zoning board only votes on whether they can have a car wash. We're not, they're not, they're not here for property lines or setbacks or any of the normal things that the zoning board does. They're here for a special permit. It still has to go to a site review, which could, could squash the whole thing. But the planning board, is these concerns that you have, that's where those would be addressed, not by us.
Got it.
So us waiting, us continuing the meeting till next month here, wouldn't help you in any way.
Well, the objection that I'm putting on the record now is this is a, this is a notice issue to me. I didn't receive sufficient notice. The notice was deficient. So that's just what I'd like to get on the record. I mean, if you guys vote on it, but I'm putting it on the record right now, then I did not receive sufficient notice for it.
Understood. I honestly don't know how much notice the applicant has to give.
I don't know.
I don't know.
We're at the planning board on July 18th.
July 18th. Did you hear that, sir?
Yes.
July 18th?
Yep.
I think we can request that Jaclyn reach out and inform you of what the notice should be. Because she's the one that he reached out to.
I think you just, you received a letter as in a bar, right?
Yes.
Nobody, nobody reached out. You received your letter as in a bar.
But he reached out to Jaclyn, is what he said. And she didn't respond to him.
She, she did, but it wasn't, I wasn't, I didn't get a copy of these plans, nor was it uploaded until Wednesday afternoon. Or, sorry, Tuesday afternoon, two days ago.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Is there anything else you want to add?
No.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Somebody want to make a motion if you want to discuss this?
I don't know. I have no discussion.
Do you have anything you want to talk about?
No.
I'm good, thank you.
Somebody want to make a motion? That's you.
That's you.
It's all you.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion for a special permit under section 3130. Is that the old line? 3130, Appendix A Table of Uses, Section C Commercial Uses 14 of the Tewksbury zoning bylaw to construct and operate a drive-through car wash on the property as shown on plans with this board. Said property is located at 1879 Main Street, assessors map 84, Lot 18, zoned commercial.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roughly how long until you file a decision? Is it, you guys, days or weeks or, everybody's different?
Probably days.
I think a couple of days.
Okay.
As fast, as fast as we get an email and respond back to it.
It's holiday weeks.
I know.
Any old business, none? Do we have any new business? None? Anything you have to add? Okay, our next meeting will be held July 28th. Somebody want to make a motion?
To adjourn?
To adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.